Call this meeting to order, please. We're going to begin with a moment of silence and the pledge led by Ms. Christie.
Face the flag.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to our meeting tonight. I see we have two elected officials in the audience. I'd like to recognize Representative Roger Cain, thank you for being here, and Randy Smith, a county commissioner. We appreciate that you all are here and listening to the business of the Board of Education. A few announcements here, board members. Due to an extremely busy schedule prior to the end of this fall semester and multiple events being held next week, the policy review meeting scheduled for December 19th will be rescheduled to a date to be determined in January. I know that's very disappointing to all of you. I spoke with Kay Good today about trying to arrange another date and hopefully we'll get something out to you in the next, well before Christmas. The Joint Education Committee is scheduled to meet next Wednesday, December 19th, at 4:00 in the Andrew Johnson Boardroom. That is something that is already previously scheduled. And also, in case anyone out there is not aware, Knox County Schools will be closed December 24th through January 4th for winter break, with Central Office being closed the 24th through the 26th. I'd like to take a moment to just wish all of our students and staff and families a well-deserved break, blessed holiday, and I'm going to wish you a Merry Christmas, too. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, if we could, could we add Board Forum?
Certainly, without objection, Board Forum will be added. Also, board members, I believe that you received an email from Ms. Cottney last evening about Item 7C3 being withdrawn. It was confirmed that none of the schools previously expressing interest in using the Legit Apps application will be proceeding, so we don't need to consider this referenced agreement, and it has been withdrawn from the agenda. Hearing nothing else, approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Mr. Thomas with special recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's always such a great pleasure to recognize the folks that do such an outstanding job for us. Recently, the Simon Youth Foundation named Ms. Janice Cook as its 2018 Administrator of the Year. Janice serves as the Executive Principal for our Dr. Paul L. Kelly Volunteer Academy at Lincoln Park. Mrs. Cook was nominated for the Administrator of the Year by her peers and her vision of excellence, compassion as an educator, and instructional expertise. When she became Executive Principal two years ago, Janice immediately took steps to improve and grow the alternative education program at the academy. She implemented several strategies to provide hope to students and ensure that they felt supported as they pursued graduation day. Cook assigned an adult advocate to work with each student to plan for their desired future, including college and the workforce. She also introduced an exit portfolio program. Students now present their portfolios to a committee of educators before graduation, showcasing their educational journey, scholarship opportunities, and career exploration. In addition to the programs she put in place to make students feel supported, Cook also provided professional development opportunities for her staff to help them understand the needs of their students and become better equipped with strategies to ensure their academic success. Please join me in congratulating Janice on her well-deserved award. And Janice, if you'll come down front?
Thank you very much. Our next special recognition involves our high school student representatives, and I'd like to turn the floor over to Ms. Self at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. The Board of High School Senior Representatives is an opportunity that allows for one senior at each Knox County High School to represent their school, bring forth pertinent issues relating to their immediate school environment and community, and collaborate directly with the Knox County Board of Education Student Representative. The student representatives were chosen by their principal to communicate with the students of their respective high schools about their individual and collective educational experiences, inform the students at their school about educational decisions that impact them, and gather feedback from students in their school in order to communicate with the Board of Education Student Representative. Thank you for your willingness to serve your fellow students and contribute to Knox County education. If Ms. Hill and Superintendent Thomas will join me up front, Danny Trent, Supervisor of Secondary Education, will read the names of each representative. Please come forward as your name is called and remain on the stage, and we will all take a group photo at the end.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board, and Superintendent Thomas. Dr. Bartlett and I would like to recognize these students, and it's an honor and pleasure to see them get recognition. So if I call your names, you come up to the stage, please. Austin East High School, we have Essence Johnson. From Bearden High School, we have Hayden Harb. Curvier Magnet Academy, Jamarra Smith. Carter High School, Lindsay Eris. Central High School, Keegan Crofts. From Farragut High School, we have Amy Anderson. From Deasha, I mean, from Fulton High School, we have Deasha Palmer. Gibbs High School, Rachel McFarlane. Holls High School, Harper Kirby. Harden Valley Academy, we have Olivia Flainer. From Corinth High School, we have Brettton Stanley. Allen Institute Academy, Bryce Lane. Powell High School, we have Sarah Sexton. South Door High School, we have Samuel Harris. And lastly, we have West High School, Brandon Willock. And these are the 2018-19 school representatives. Thank you.
For the record, I would like to let the audience know that all of these students were contacted. And as you can imagine, even having the honor of being selected to represent your school as a student board rep, they are all extremely busy, involved in many, many extracurricular activities. And all of the ones that were not here did indicate that they had something else already scheduled going on with their schools. So I assure you, it is not because of a lack of interest, but merely because of overscheduling, which we all struggle with from time to time. All right, we are ready to move on with our agenda. Ms. Cottney?
Item 7, Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Norman and Horn, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8A, approve second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy A100, School District, School Board Legal Status and Authority as amended.
Second.
Moved by Owen and Norman, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approves?
8B, approve second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy A110, School District Planning Goals and Objectives as amended.
Second.
Motion by Owen and Norman, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved?
8C, approve second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B110, Method of Election of Officers as amended.
Second.
Owen and Norman, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
8D, approve second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B162, Agenda as amended.
Second.
Owen and Norman, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
8E, approve second reading to rescind Knox County Board of Education Policy D231 bids and quotations.
Second.
Owen and Norman, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved?
8F, approve second reading of new Knox County Board of Education Policy E121, Testing of Drinking Water for Contamination.
Second.
Owen and Norman, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved?
8G, approve second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I330, Senior Classification as amended.
Second.
Motion by Owen and Norman, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8H, approve second reading of new Knox County Board of Education Policy I341, Uniform Grading Policy.
Second.
Owen and Norman, any discussion?
Madam Chair, we have a speaker signed up for public forum on this agenda item.
Thank you. If the speaker would come forward, please.
Daniel Labrador. Please state your name and county of residence.
My name is Daniel Labrador, and I live in Knox County.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. Again, my name is Daniel Labrador, and I'm a senior at Bearden High School. I would like to discuss the new AP grading policy that is contingent on this new uniform grading policy. The current policy states that students must physically sit for the exam before receiving five points to their average for taking the AP course. However, this raises some concerns. I find that the best amendment to the policy would be to give students the five-point bonus points to their average after the end of the semester instead of at the end of the academic year. As seniors, many of the schools to which we apply to will require our mid-year reports as part of their admissions process. Most college applications are due sometime between January 1st and January 15th, with mid-year reports being required by early February, and final admissions decisions not becoming available until early April. In addition, whether or not we get accepted into our top choice colleges, many scholarship opportunities as well as honors programs are based on GPA requirements. Our GPAs at the end of the semester will not be accurate due to the absence of the five additional points, and as such, will not be accurately reflected on our mid-year reports. This is not only a concern for my peers and I at Bearden High School, but also students across the county, from Gibbs High School to Farragut High School. Today, we gave Ms. Hill and Ms. Cottney a copy of a few policies across districts at the state of Tennessee and how they responded to this uniform grading policy, and if you could please refer to them. All of these schools have policies in which they give five points to their students at the end of the semester instead of the academic year, and have a policy in place to revoke the five points contingent on the student physically taking the exam. These counties include Rutherford County, Williamson County, as well as Oak Ridge City Schools. Again, in summary, these districts award students additional points at the end of the first semester and have a policy in place to remove the points contingent on students physically taking the exam. While we have been informed by our guidance department, our principal, Mr. Myers, and the secondary school supervisor, Dr. Bartlett, that there will be a letter attached to our transcripts stating that our GPAs and grades are not accurately reflected due to the policy, this still raises some concerns. It is common for many elite schools to review an entire application in nearly seven minutes or less. For many schools, this may include a reading of three 650-word essays, extracurriculars, and an entire transcript in those short minutes. An additional letter not only possibly distracts from the actual substance of our application itself, but may also not fulfill its intended purpose. While there are no official quotas that elite colleges set for themselves regarding state diversity, it is no secret that these elite universities do take pride in having high state diversity. Therefore, if a university is specifically trying to raise its representation from the state of Tennessee, and a student from Knox County is in competition with a student from Williamson County where students are awarded the five points after the end of the semester, it is apparent that the student from Williamson County will have a clear leg up against a student from Knox County. In order to ensure the competitive academic integrity of the collegiate admissions and scholarship process, we believe that the policy implemented by this body should grant students five points to their average at the end of the semester instead of the end of the academic year. Just for insight, we did a little research to find how this policy may actually impact students. According to Niche.com, which is basically an appraised university ranking site, the difference between a student with a 3.9 and a 4.0 perfect GPA can mean a 17% less chance of admission at the school that is my top pick, which is the University of Chicago. Again, thank you for allowing me to present my concerns. We are not here to complain. We understand that the Board of Education has a really hard job to do. We are only here to encourage the equity for students across the state of Tennessee. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public forum on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Horn. Thank you for your advocacy and coming forward and speaking so eloquently. Mr. Norman, I'll turn this over to you, since these are your fine students that have come forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nice meeting you, Mr. Labrador. My only comment, and I guess I'll refer to John Ryswick about how this is interpreted by the administrative staff, by the principals, in the system. And basically, at least for me, I'm relying on their evaluation and what the options are here, and we've got a few. And so, there's been a fair amount of consideration of this. So I'm just going to let John guide us through what those options were and why we chose to go in one particular direction.
And if I may, Mr. Norman, before you speak, Dr. Ryswick. Ms. Owen, did you have a comment? To defer, thank you. Dr. Ryswick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Norman, and thank you, Mr. Labrador, for coming and speaking tonight. As Mr. Labrador said, there was a change to state board policy that actually happened back in 2017 that put this into place. So prior to that, any student who sat for their other ones besides AP, but we're talking about advanced placement. So prior to that, any student who took an AP course got two, and it was incentivized in two ways. One was with a quality point, which for us means kind of a five-point grade scale. It's kind of what we're more familiar with, and A counts five points instead of four. So that was one incentive, that it changes the grading scale for students in that. And then the second was this additional percentage points that were added to students' grades. The state board in 2017, I believe it was October of 2017, came out with a change to that that said it was up to the local boards to decide about the quality points, which our policy leaves that in place. So an A is still a 5.0 instead of a 4.0 in advanced placement classes. But then it added this new requirement that was, in order for a student to receive the percentage points, they had to actually sit for the exam as opposed to just taking the course. So we asked the state if we could have a year to look at that and get feedback from our principals and kind of think about the ramifications of what that looks like, because, you know, either way, it's a tough situation. If you award the points on the front side, then you have to have a means to be able to take those points away after transcripts are sent. And the flip side would be you wait and do what their policy change asks us to do and wait for a student to sit for the exam in order to earn those additional percentage points. So we took that to our principal advisory council, presented those options to them. They felt that both were tough decisions, because again, neither one is a perfect fit to try to comply with the new state board policy. But as we looked at our past history and principals talked through that, the risk of taking a student's grade away, the principals felt afterward. So in essence, if a student earned an A but hadn't sat for the exam and then failed to sit for the exam, we would have to take those points away, meaning that student's grade, again hypothetically, could be moved down to a B, which would change their transcript and have to report that back to a school. We did some numbers to kind of look at, based on the number of students who have failed to sit for that exam. And in the classes where our seniors are enrolled, about 60% historically sit for that exam. And so, if we did that with about 1,100 seniors in there currently in those courses, I think we would potentially, again, this is all, if all of those numbers hold true, we could potentially be making changes to reduce a grade to about 450 transcripts at the end of, if they fail to sit for the exam, because those five points could do that. Again, our principals felt that it was easier to have a conversation about adding to a student's grade at the end than it was to have conversations about reducing points from a student's grade to get to that for their GPA. So again, there's no great answer either side on this one. And so, that was where we landed. As Daniel's mentioned, there are other districts who have chosen to do other things with that, too. And then there were ones that have chosen to do the same thing we have. So it really was, we had lots of conversation with the state board. And I think what their intention is, there were a lot of students in the state who take the course but don't take the exam. And I think this was their attempt to have students do that. So that was the policy, and we were kind of left to make it one decision or the other. So we took the year to take it to our principals to get input.
Okay, so Mr. Ryswick pointed out that 60% of seniors don't actually sit for the exam. So is that number coming from years past? So in my experience at least, I know that when I've-
Ms. Labrador, we need to discuss-
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. You can have a seat, and we need to discuss the policy. Thank you.
Ms. Owen, did you have comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions also. Dr. Ryswick, do we know why the 40% choose not to sit or have historically chosen not to sit for the exam?
Thank you, Ms. Owen. We don't have an accurate as to why that is. What we did, worked with our research department to kind of just pull historicals in those courses. So we kind of, we know, we get a report back from a college board on the AP as far as who does sit for those. And so then we looked at classes who had seniors enrolled in them, and then looked at what that rate was typically over time. And so that's how we kind of calculated to get an idea of what that would look like. But again, that was kind of the best we could do to get some kind of number. And with 1,100 seniors, they might have different reasons.
And what part of the fee do we cover for those?
So we currently in Knox County cover for students who have need, and that's kind of open for principal interpretation on that. We don't have a criteria for that. That could be anything from a student who qualifies for free and reduced lunch, or it could be a student who takes multiple tests. And again, administration determines that there's a need for that. We do currently have federal Title IV funds that we set aside for some of that, as well as, in any given year, the state has a way to be able to help us recoup that cost. And I think the total cost of a student warrant to sit for that exam, I think there's a $12, $12 to $15 kind of reshelfing, restocking fee that is owed by the student at that point. But for the most part, we've been able to cover that.
Okay, and what is the total cost of the exam to take it?
I'm going to ask Ms. Jackson to make sure. I haven't paid for one in a while. About around $96.
Okay. So we have, I would guess, a large number of students who pay that full $96, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ryswick. Madam Chair, the concern that I have is also a concern that a parent expressed a few weeks ago to me, and that is that it feels like students are buying these extra points. And while I don't think that's the intent of the state board, it certainly feels like that to parents and students. And I know that we don't have much choice in this, because our state board has made that determination. I also know that we have two people who are registered as education lobbyists from College Board in Nashville. And that is a, they're a business. They're in the business of making money. And so, of course, they are asking our legislators, our state board, to support having students take the test. They want more students to take the test. That's perfectly reasonable if you're in the testing business. But I think it does a huge disservice to our students, and it really feels unethical to me. And so, I'd like to ask Mr. Dupler to look into it and see if there are any legal problems with requiring that students sit for a test and earn extra points. Because it's not based on how they do on the test. It's really just based for paying for the test. So if you could look into that for us so that we could bring this back and look at it some more, I think it's something we need to think about. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Owen. We currently have a motion on the floor, so we'll need to address that in a moment. Ms. Bab?
One thing I just didn't know if was considered, I know right now we had 40% not sitting, but in the past, there were no repercussions for not sitting for it. I have to think, I mean, obviously, there's no data on it, but I would have to think the number of kids that are going to sign up to get this five points is going to go dramatically up with this. So I don't know if that was considered at all, and I, because it might end up being a very few percentage of kids' grades that get changed. I am kind of torn on it. I don't necessarily have the problem Ms. Owen has about it, because I do think if you're signing up for a class that is an AP class, there are always other offerings offered for that same subject. You don't have to take an AP English class. You can take a regular English class. So there really is not, unless I'm wrong about that. I think at all of our schools, we offer other options in the subjects that usually APs are offered in. But having seniors right now, and they're applying for scholarships, and knowing that some of them are weighted on GPAs, I don't know if we have looked at any of the scholarships that maybe truly a child would not qualify, because I know a lot of the decisions are made by certain dates. So the policy itself on the five points for taking the test, I don't have a problem with. But I guess I hadn't really thought through all the repercussions for the students that are at schools that it impacts them at the Christmas date or the end of the semester date. So I'm a little torn on this, I guess.
Thank you, Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think initially, I agree with the policy change, because I think it would be better not to take those points away. But then, when Mr. Labrador raises this question about essentially schools looking at the seventh semester of grades, and even recognizing that a letter would be attached to transcripts, you know, I think his point is very valid about how quickly those applications are reviewed. And if a number is, if they're looking at a number, and like he said, if there are two students who have a similar number, even if there's a letter attached, that other one is going to be weighted higher, because it's a concrete number. You're looking at a number as the grade point average. So that is my concern, and I'm wondering, okay, one question, Dr. Ryswick. The 40% that did not take the test, had those students already paid for the test? The 40% that did not take the test, had those students already paid for the test? Do you know whether they had actually registered?
Thank you, Ms. Horn. I'm not positive whether they had or not. So, you know, again, I think Ms. Bab makes a great point too. You know, we don't know with the new stipulations to that if that number would go up or not. You know, because it was a new policy from the state board, we don't have a lot of historic outside of what actually it was. And, you know, different reasons again for that. Sometimes students will try an AP course and, you know, maybe, which is great because it's exposure to that level of rigor, but may not feel like they're going to do well enough on a test to maybe earn a college credit and maybe not take it. So there's, I mean, there's probably a myriad of reasons of why they may not have. So to know if they registered or not, I'm not positive.
Okay. Thank you. I'm wondering if, so that our students are competitive with their peers, if a student has registered to take the test by the end of their semester, their seventh semester, so their first part of their senior year, if they've registered to take the test, if those points could be awarded with the understanding that if they don't sit for the exam, that they will be deducted. Of course, that would need to be communicated to their chosen school and that's where I think the difficulty lies. But do you have any feeling on that?
Thank you, Ms. Horn. I'm at the same place most of you all are and with Mr. Labrador. I mean, it's, there's not an easy solution either way because, you know, there's the other side of that, that if a student fails to sit and we've, you know, turned in an A or a B or whatever that maybe raised that GPA, then we have to send something back to the school, to the college at the end to say that wasn't truly their GPA. So, you know, it's tough. Neither, neither one, because of the timing where the exam is given, is the true GPA of the student. Or it may be and it may not be. It may be that they do get the five points and it raises it. And it may be that they've given the five points and they actually wouldn't earn them if they don't sit. So then there's no way to remedy that under what the current policy is. So I think there could be a lot of things we would look at to say what makes us think in good faith that the student is going to sit. And I think, you know, most of those kids would follow through with that. I mean, our kids, we've got great students. But again, you know, I don't know what that number would be that could or couldn't.
Yeah, I think I'm uncomfortable also with giving a school, a university, a grade that's not, that may or may not be the actual grade. It could be an inflated grade. So that's definitely, I think, a concern for us also. So I'd love to hear from other people. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bounds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I remember when this was a pretty heated discussion at one of our state meetings of state school boards across the state. And I think what I trouble with is the inconsistency that has been created across the state by an appointed state board of education. So either way, I think that as a board, we need to go back to the state board, be it through advocating, a resolution, a letter, our superintendent talking to them and let them know that we request that all districts abide by the same guidelines. I know Dr. Ryswick mentioned one that was giving two points and then adding three points later. I mean, some of these districts have skirted the intent of this and it is creating a hardship for Knox County students. So I think whatever the board decides, the bigger issue is making sure that we hold the state board of education accountable and that they fix the situation so that all students across the state of Tennessee abide by the same guidelines. So that would be my recommendation as well.
Thank you, Ms. Bounds. Ms. Self?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I would like to say I appreciate as a student, the discussion that this board is having right now on this issue. And I would like to thank Mr. Labrador for coming forward and bringing up this issue in the first place. Speaking as a student who has taken many AP courses, one of the incentives behind an AP course is showing colleges that I want to take rigorous content and that I am a rigorous student and I would be good at their university. But if my points don't count when I'm applying senior year, even though I'm taking AP courses as a senior, that kind of defeats the purpose of taking an AP course as a senior because colleges are not able to see that reflected in my grades. And like it was brought up earlier, that makes me seem like a less competitive student as compared to my peers even in Tennessee because there's such inconsistency in this policy. The solution for that, like we've said, is very hard because either way, there are difficulties with it. But I know as a student, it would be better for me and my peers in AP courses if it was added, if I indicated that I was going to take the exam and I got the points initially finishing that first semester as I applied to colleges. How we decide to handle that, how you as a board decide to handle that will be the difference. Thank you.
And thank you. Thank you. Very, very well put. Just to be clear, Dr. Pat, Ms. Bounds, did you still-
No, I'm sorry. Let me sell one of those.
Just to be clear, Dr. Ryswick, this is something, a charge that has come down to us from the state board of education. Is that correct?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, it is. State board policy 3.301, uniform grading policy was a change initially made in 2017 with a revision in 2018.
All right. I noticed that the copy of the policies from others counties that you shared with us, the Williamson County policy is actually dated June of '17. So we really have no way of knowing if a change has been made since that time. Did you have a comment?
Yes. That is actually the policy that's located on their website and on their county website and all the schools' websites. And it's been confirmed by faculty within that district on how they're handling the policy.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm very glad that we have a state board representative in here who has worked on education committee to see firsthand sometimes the issues that we face and the way our hands are tied. One of the legislative priorities we've had for several years, I think the number one has always been more requests for local control. And this is clearly a situation where, again, it's been stripped from us. Ms. Owen?
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions for Dr. Ryswick, if I may. Do we have any other courses that you know of that require paying for a test as part of the final grade?
Thank you, Ms. Owen. International Baccalaureate, those are the IB programs do. And then other ones in a state like a Cambridge would have the same kind of thing. So pretty much any of those advanced and actually industry certifications do as well. So a lot of the things, as we, as the state moves forward to the episodes of the early post-secondary opportunities that earn college credits, because those partnerships are with outside organizations, be it community colleges or, you know, technical schools, TCATs, things like that, there's usually a cost associated with it to earn that dual enrollment or that sort of thing through those. And then again, AP goes through college board and then Cambridge and IB have theirs as well. There's a cost associated because they're outside entities that are granting that college credit.
Thank you. Let me see if I can ask a clarifying question. If a student is in, let's say they're in a networking class and they're doing computer networking and then they take a networking certification, is that an instance when that would add points to their grade?
There are, yes. In the same uniform grading policy, there are from the state board, there are allowances given for additional percentage points and also quality points for things like honors courses, industry certification, dual enrollment courses, things like that. And AP just happens to be one of those.
Okay. So there are other certification courses or tests that the state board is requiring for those extra points? Does that make sense?
Yes. The state board puts the, in order to, for a local district to add, they give them the leeway to add or they assign the points that can be added to those. Whether or not a district offers those opportunities is up to the district is the way it's set up.
Did all of those change at the same time?
The quality points changed in 2018 as far as how they were awarded for some courses. This changed for all of the sitting for exams, it did change as well in 2018 for all things. So even industry certification and those apply the same way that the AP does. So now, when you read the policy, it says on the end of the paragraph that as students sit for culminating exams, can be awarded then.
Thank you. And I appreciate your depth of knowledge that you can answer all our questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Ryswick, can I have a question? The principals, did you get input from all the principals or select few? How did that process go?
Thank you, Ms. Satterfield. We have a monthly meeting with a principal advisory council that rotates. There are probably, I'm going to ballpark, there's roughly 20 principals from different grade levels on that. So principals know that they have a representative or multiple representatives from the high school. So this is one that we pulled just the principal advisory council from that to give us initial input. After receiving that input, we did take that to the entire high school principal group and say, this is what we felt as well as the principal advisory council would be the best way to handle this and that it wasn't the greatest situation either way. So all principals had knowledge of it before we brought it to the policy review.
Thank you. I agree that this is a tough one, so I definitely support what Board Member Bounds and Owen mentioned about, we got to go back to the state. When making the decision that we have to make today, if we do, I don't know, is more so, the reality of grade inflation is a concern, like you brought up. But I know that at the college process in itself, you still have to submit a final transcript. And if that final transcript, from my experience of a college admission, looks different or there's drastically changed, then they can revoke your admissions. My concern basically with leaning towards allowing students to get the five and then committing to, committing to sit on the, for the test is more so scholarship approach to it because a lot of scholarships have to be in before the end of the semester. And so I wouldn't want to hinder a child from having access to resources to get to school because of the fact that a policy that, that's really out of our control. And so I'm leaning more, it's a tough one, but I hear a student's voice and a student's concern in this policy.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree, Ms. Satterfield. And Dr. Ryswick, the state, we, it is within our right to award the points and then take them back if the student doesn't sit, correct? So we would still be in policy if we allow those points to be added, correct?
Correct. The policy reads that they are not to get it. And each, in each one of those cases in the policy, industry certification or lists out the advanced courses, and it says in that that they have to sit for a culminating exam. And then there's a, there's an individual paragraph that says that the LEA, if they choose to award them prior to sitting, must then in policy have a way that they will take the points away if a student fails to.
Okay. And I'm assuming this policy time is of the essence because students need to know this information. So we need to come to some sort of decision tonight.
I would think it is. And again, we were given a year to kind of have some time to think about it. So, but again, it affects folks like Mr. Labrador.
Right. Well, I think since we have the ability to award the points now, I definitely agree that we need to go back to the state board of education and address this issue because it's not fair that districts can award points differently. So I think that's one thing. But in the meantime, we need to have a policy that works for our students. So I think that we need to amend this policy so that perhaps, and we can, I can hear from Ms. Bounds and then make a substitute motion, but would, do you think it would be reasonable to amend the policy so that it's, after a student sits for the aligned culminating exam, with the exception of senior students who have registered for the AP exam, points will be awarded in that semester? With the, with the knowledge that those points may be revoked if they do not sit for the exam?
I think to that nature, it would have to language like that because I think the only, what I recall from that policy from the state board was that LEAs have the ability to make that decision, they just have to have what will happen if it doesn't or how they retract. So I think, I mean, Mr. Dupler's probably a better suited man to answer that, but I would say, I would think that would meet the requirements of that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to hear from Ms. Bounds first.
Oh, I would support a substitute motion if you choose to make one. But I just wanted to go back to Ms. Owen's point because it troubles me that the organizations that have lobbyists, who's, these organizations have lobbyists who benefit financially from the state appointed board of education's decision. And I just wanted to remind the public too, because it took me many years to grab hold of this, our state has an appointed state board of education, we have a department of education, and we have our legislatures. So there is a three-pronged group of people making these decisions at the state level. And this one has come down from, I guess, and you can clarify if I'm wrong, Representative Kane, but from the state board of education with the approval of the department of education. So just don't want to blame the wrong people and I don't think the public always knows that there are three different entities at the state level that we deal with as a local board of education. So can I clarify, if a substitute, I guess this would be maybe Mr. Dupler, if a substitute, since this is a second reading, if a substitute motion is brought forward, then it could become effective immediately? Or does it need a second? If it was approved?
Thank you, Ms. Bounds. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I mean, because this has been considered and you'd be making a change at this point, but, but since it's been considered and now the board has discussed it, I mean, this still is a second reading. Now, if it's, if it's changed in, you know, a more substantial manner, then, you know, it would need to be perhaps put on deferment or, you know, put back to a first reading. But I mean, you know, I guess my answer is it depends upon the change. And if it's, if it's just a one-line change, then likely, I mean, it's still second reading.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Christie?
Yes, thank you. I was, well, I was going to ask if there was a way we could make something, make it different for the seniors. I know that had this policy been in place two years ago, it would have affected one of my kids because he had a mid-December deadline for a program he wanted to attend. And when you're looking at AP classes, kids that are at schools that don't offer as many AP classes are already at a slight disadvantage. So if we aren't giving them the points for those AP classes, they do take their senior year, then that's going to put them at an even bigger disadvantage, maybe even when they're competing with kids in the same district, so.
Thank you, Ms. Christie. Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My problem with this, and as far as amending this or having a substitute motion, is that this is a policy from 2017. The people who take AP courses know upfront what the rules of the game are. We're in the middle of the year. We have our principals and administrators who have spoken to us about what's the least confusing, least damaging way to go with this right now. That's apparently what they recommended. I don't see how we can go against that. And if we do, we do so at our peril of causing more problems. Certainly, the principals know a whole lot more about what certain details could be even more complicating that we don't even know about. So I would warn us about this right now. I certainly agree with Ms. Bounds. We need to have all of our, all of our counties on equal footing. We need to appeal to the state board about that. But I would warn us about changing this in the middle of the street.
Thank you. Which, Ms. Bab, and then try to complete this with Ms. Horn.
Sure. And this is just trying to clarify a little bit on her discussion of a possible substitute motion, is on knowing whether they've paid for the exam or not, do we even know that that's a possibility that they've paid? Because that's probably a whole nother level beyond our knowledge. And maybe John knows, are the exams paid for at this point? And I don't know that. And, and I don't know that. Do you understand what I'm asking?
Well, like, I just paid for one yesterday.
Okay, then you know.
Yeah, yeah. It just opened last week.
Okay.
They would have a very short window.
Would you like to recognize?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to make a substitute motion to add language on line six. And Dr. Roswick, as you're listening, if you would, we can certainly change the, change the way this is worded, to include the line, senior students who have registered for an AP exam. It should actually say, with the, with one exception, let's add that in, with one exception, senior students who have registered for an AP exam by the end of the semester will be awarded the extra percentage points. And if the student does not sit for the exam, those percentage points will be, will be So first, I'd like to ask Dr. Roswick if, or if I can have a...
I just want to make sure with Ms. Jackson, that I wasn't speaking in turn, that they, there, there is registration that they could do in past this time. I think it's into March, the window where they could register. But the window is open now for that registration to begin. And what I was asking was just making sure on our students who do some kind of fee waiver or some kind of thing, that, that they wouldn't, because by saying they've paid for it, but you're saying registered, and I think that's probably the right word. So I think, I think it could work that way, yes.
Okay. Okay. So to restate, so that everyone is on the same page, I make a substitute motion to add on line six, with one exception, senior students who have registered for an AP exam by the end of the semester will be awarded the extra percentage points. If the student does not sit for the exam, the percent, percentage points will be revoked.
All right. Thank you. We have amended motion on the floor. Mr. Duper?
Madam Chair, we would need a second for that motion, and then, and then the board would need to, this is according to, since we're following more of the Roberts rules, then the board would need to vote on the substitute motion to take the place of the main motion on the floor.
Thank you. Do I have a second? All right. Second, all right. Ms. Cootney, could we take a roll call on that, please?
Can I make one comment before we?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Back to, to Mr. Norman's comment about the principals, speaking as a parent, there's several parents up here who are, who have recently paid for these tests, or are in that arena. I think we've got to look at this from our students' perspective. And those, these percentage points, if you have a student who took two or three AP classes their seventh semester, so the beginning of their, their, their senior year, this would make quite a difference on their grade point average. And so, I think, I think we really, it, it will be, it could cause some issues for our guidance counselors, but I think that, that we need to go with this for this year, go back to the State Board, and hopefully get some resolution that will alleviate that issue. But I think we owe it to our students to do what we can to make sure that they are on a level playing field with students across the state and across the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Helf, do you have a comment on the substitute motion? Ms. Helf?
Um, just talking about wording in the substitute motion, we only said percentage points, not percentage points and quality points, and there are two things to consider. I think the quality points are the points that are in...
You get those anyway.
Yes, you do.
It's, ask Dr. Roswick for some.
Um, I, I just want to clarify on wording, because it says that the quality points correspond to the letter grade, but the percentage points are the points added on to the final grade. So I just want to make sure we're amending the right thing.
Thank you, Ms. Helf. They, the quality points are actually not in question on this one. They are, they're going to stay and be awarded. And again, easiest way to understand is that, that's what gives you the five-point scale. So the first portion of that on line six, where it talks about there are two types of weighting, and the two incentives that they would get, so the quality points would stand, they stand currently as well. It is the percentage points that the State Board policy speaks to. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we go forward with the substitute motion, Dr. Roswick, what will be the procedure? I know the letter will be attached, but how will the transcript, what, do you know what that procedure would actually look like to the difficulties, going to Board Member Norman's point?
If we, thank you, Ms. Satterfield, if we, if, if it were to pass the way it is now, we haven't formalized that. I think Mr. Labrador bringing that to our attention, and we would probably, again, go back to principals to ask them to look at language with us on that. To my knowledge, that conversation has happened at Bearden High School at this point, with Mr. Myers and Mr., and Dr. Bartlett. And so, we probably would, would give some guidance to what that letter could look like after receiving input from principals, and then allow them to, you know, kind of put their own piece on that for their community. But we would probably want to try to get similar language across the board if it was. And again, I don't know how colleges will receive that or not. I think that was an attempt from Mr. Myers to try to help his students out, which we acknowledge.
And when it comes to removing the grade, say that the student doesn't sit, how, and you might not have the answer for this, do you know what that process would look like for the guidance counselor? Like, how much time would that take, and all that? Would that hinder other things that are responsible for that, people that do the transcripts? How much time?
Well, I, thank you, Ms. Satterfield. I think it would, it would be hard to tell, because we haven't done it at that scale. I think the, it, it could be done. We've had, you know, we have current policy that talks about a grade change and a grade change form, that you, because the teacher of record is the one who, is the only one who can do that, unless they're no longer, you know, with the district, or are able to be reached, and then it becomes the responsibility of the principal. So we probably will need to consult that policy as well, as how we would do that before we would just change the grade. At that point, the teacher of record should still be, you know, where they could, where they could finalize that. And it's hard to tell, again, how much time that would take. But I think the greater concern, as we had conversations with principals, are if you have a large number of students, it's, we'll put it this way, it's a lot harder to take away than it is to give sometimes, in those conversations with families and with, with parents. Because once it's there, and once you see it, back to it being concrete, and then to come back and say, you know, I thought my, my son or daughter earned this grade, but no, they really didn't, they earned this grade instead. I think that's, that's probably more the, the time of conversations it would take to have, would probably be the greater concern.
Thank you.
All right. Hearing no more discussion, we have a substitute motion on the floor. Ms. Cootney?
Yes, and just to clarify, this is to agree to the substitute motion taking the place of the original motion on the floor. Okay. Ms. Satterfield?
Can you read that again, so I can fully understand?
So the substitute motion is to add the language to line six, with one exception, senior students who have registered for an AP exam by the end of the semester will be awarded the extra percentage points. If the student does not sit for the AP exam, the percentage points will be revoked.
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Owen? Mr. Norman?
No.
Ms. Bab?
Yes.
Ms. Bounds?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
No.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Ms. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
That's seven yes votes and two no votes.
Thank you. Substitute motion carries. And then we need to vote on the original. Now going back to the original motion. Yes, please. And if you would state that?
So this roll call vote will be to approve or disapprove the substitute motion. Ms. Satterfield?
I'm not following. Can you help me understand what I'm about to vote on?
Yes, Ms. Satterfield, ma'am, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Please.
What happens is, when you have a substitute motion under Roberts rules, that motion has to take the place of the main motion, because the main motion was already on the floor. So what you just voted for was that this substitute motion is now the only motion. The main motion has been eradicated. So, so at this point, you, you can vote yes or no on the actual substance of the substitute motion.
Got you. Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Could I clarify, this is still second reading? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's my understanding, that you all have thoroughly discussed this, and it's, and it's, it's been through a policy review meeting as well, so, so, so yes. I mean, in, in the law department's opinion, this would still be second reading.
Thank you. Yes. Mr. Norman?
No.
Ms. Bab?
Yes.
Ms. Bounds?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
No.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Ms. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
And that's seven yes votes and two no.
Thank you. Moving along to letter I, please.
Item eight, I approve second reading of Knox County Board of Education policy I-381, integration of TCAP and EOC scores and student grades as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Norman and Horn, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight J, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy A-140 School Day as amended.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Horn, second by, I'm sorry, motion by Owen, second by Horn. Any discussion?
Can I just clarify?
Yes, Ms. Horn.
So we're voting on the, the first one listed, the revision offered by collaborative, collaborative conferencing, is that correct?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Motion to approve? I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item nine A, approve district priority school improvement grant from the State of Tennessee Department of Education for Sarah Moore Green Magnet Academy, in the amount of $300,000 per year for three years contingent on school demonstration of improved academic performance.
So moved.
Second.
Satterfield and Horn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Nine B, approve an emergency impact aid grant from the State of Tennessee Department of Education in the amount of $13,375 designated to cover in costs for six students displaced by hurricanes Harvey, Irma, and Maria.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Owen and Satterfield, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item nine C, approve a Dow Chemical Company grant in the amount of $25,497.90 for Pond Gap Elementary School designated to the installation of a shelter for the outdoor community school garden.
A motion? Do I hear motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Horn and Owen, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item nine D, approve a Crystal Foundation grant in the amount of $980 for Mount Olive Elementary School designated to school library improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Christie and Horn, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, motion carries.
Nine E, approve a Crystal Foundation grant in the amount of $3,000 for Westview Elementary School designated to the purchase of a 3D printer for the school's STEM lab.
So moved.
Second.
Satterfield and Bab, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item ten A, approve intent to purchase Internet access services with Education Networks of America LLC through a Metropolitan Nashville Public Schools contract for the funding year 2019 to 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Horn, or by Owen and Horn, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven A, approve fiscal year 2018 budget line item transfers for the general purpose fund in the amount of $8,010,000.
So moved.
Do I have a, motion by Norman and Horn, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven B, approve fiscal year 2018 central cafeteria fund balance designation in the amount of $1,218,265.41.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Norman, Horn, and Owen, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven C, approve BB&amp;T Treasury Management Agreement to change bank managing the Knox County Schools payroll account to Branch Banking and Trust Company as part of Knox County Banking Services Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Norman and Owen, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven D, approve 2018, 2019 sports and special events general liability insurance proposal and an annual premium cost of $31,407 using general purpose funds.
So moved.
Second.
Norman and Owen, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven E, approve resolution in opposition to school vouchers.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Owen and Bab? Thank you. Discussion? Mr. Duper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to point out to the board that, as promised last week, we have added the phrase "tax credits" to the second paragraph of this resolution. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you for that clarification. Ms. Owen?
I didn't catch this until a minute ago, but I think when we added that, we lost the "and" at the end of the first "whereas." So we need to add an "and" back in there. That would, that would be the only change.
Yeah. It may not have been there to begin with, but, but we can certainly add the "and." Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Owen. Do we have any speakers on this?
We do not.
All right. Any discussion? Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment, in reference to, to this and the way it was worded, we know that the, the governor is going to, if he does what he says he's going to, that he's going to offer something, and the legislature will consider it. And, you know, we've not had our meeting with our Knox delegation yet as to what their attitude is. And they may be divided, they may be, you know, all of one opinion, who, who knows? But I guess the point is that he was pretty open about his agenda in the, in his race for, for governor. And he wasn't specific, but I think he got much better than 50% of the vote in Knox County. And in doing so, I guess he got more votes than, than, you know, all of the board members combined. So he has some support now. I, I know that, that teachers and that we've opposed this in the, in the past, but I, I guess what I'm saying is, I think it's a little premature to, to just jump up and say that we're, we're going to oppose any and everything. And I think, now, this is just my opinion, but I think when it comes down to the legislature deciding on the matter, whatever he offers, or if they decide to change and offer something else, I think that the bottom line is, the people in the legislature that are voting will, in the end, vote the way they think their constituents in their district feel. Now, and that, that's the majority of, of their constituents. The bottom line, that's the bottom line. The bottom line, that's the bottom line. So I'm not, I'm not going to vote for it for, for that reason, I just think it's a little premature. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bounds?
Thank you. To that point, Mr. McMillan, we had two candidates for governor. One was a big supporter of vouchers, and one was a big supporter of charter schools. So given my choices, I felt like I, like many across the state, had to look deeper before I voted and could not just vote on educational issues alone. I did receive the bulk of the emails I received, and we did receive quite a few on this as a board, were to support this resolution that Ms. Owens has put forth. I think it's very important. Knox County, in the past four years, has led out with boards across the state, whether it be resolutions against testing, or resolutions against holding teachers accountable for the test scores, the failure of tests. And I feel like that we don't, we have set an example to lead and not to follow, and I think we need to make it clear to those that are listening that we do not support vouchers. And hopefully, if other boards across the state will do this too, then our governor may take that into consideration. So I intend to support this resolution.
Thank you. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to note that I don't believe our governor ran on only one issue. I think there were many issues for people to consider, and so I think it's unfair to say that, that, that percentage shows support for vouchers. In our recent School Boards Association meeting, delegates there voted 92% to support a similar resolution. I think that anytime we are talking about taking money from public schools, we are making a very poor choice. And our job here is to manage our public schools. And I don't think we can manage our public schools if we are saying that it is okay to take money away from them. Regarding the timeliness, I have talked with our class representatives, each of them, our TSBA government relations folks, and our TEA government relations folks, and each of them agreed that it needs to be passed sooner rather than later. They felt that the timeline that it has been passed in the, in previous years will be too late. They all agreed that having, having our priorities in place before the legislature, before the legislature takes their seats is very important, because they need to know where we stand before they begin deliberating, rather than after. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Bab?
I'm going to agree with the last two speakers, and then I feel like, especially Bill Lee winning the Republican nomination, we all saw that was an ugly mug-slinging campaign, and I think there were a lot of forces in place besides just the voucher issue on him becoming the Republican candidate and then ultimately winning the race. With that being said, I got a lot of emails on this issue, and really what I think people need to be doing is letting their legislators know that they voted for Bill Lee but for reasons other than because of the vouchers, because they're the ones that are going to be really voting on this. So I would just hope that those that do not believe in vouchers will speak to the body that can actually have some control over it.
Thank you. Ms. Christie? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. McMillan?
I was just going to reply to a couple of comments. One from Ms. Owen, I, I don't believe that the, the focus was on that aspect of education even with, with the Lee campaign. There were, there were multiple issues, and I didn't mean to imply that, but it was out there for anybody that, that looked. But it was not one of those, you know, top of the list with, with, with most folks, they were looking for other, other issues. But I do think that, as Ms. Bab said, i-if you're, if you're interested in, in doing something, the, the, the people, constituents should contact their legislators. And I, I just personally don't believe that, that we're going to set some kind of trend off, firestorm that's going to sweep the state, knowing a little bit about how the legislature has operated over the years. I've never served in it, but I've been over it some, and, and have followed what they've done. And I, I, I think when, when all said and done, no matter what they tell you, they'll be nice to you, but no matter what they tell you, when all said and done, they'll vote where they think the votes in their district are. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with a lot of what's already been said, that a lot of people voted for our governor for issues other than education, and they may or may not agree with this, with this topic. I think we have been charged with, with doing our role, doing our part for our public school. And I believe that I would like to send a message from Knox County that we need our state to believe in public education, and so I will be, I will be supporting this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, Ms. Cottney, would you do a roll call, please?
Ms. Satterfield?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
No.
Ms. Bab?
Yes.
Ms. Bounds?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
No.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Ms. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
That's seven yes votes and two no votes.
Thank you. So the resolution carries. All right, moving on to public forum.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two speakers for public forum. The first one is Donald Dodson. Okay, I don't see Mr. Dodson. The second one is Kerwin Fricks. Thank you. Please state your name and county of residence.
I'm Kerwin Fricks, a Knox County resident. Thank you all so much. I just wanted to take a few moments, and I appreciate your time, just to give you all some updates on Green Magnet Academy. I'm the PTA president, and we have a PTA this year, and that's going really well. We have a very active executive board, and we have over 100 PTA members, approaching 120, which from what I've heard, that's really high, so I'm very proud of that. We've implemented a house system this year, and so students are sorted, are sorted into four houses, and they earn points weekly based on set criteria. The winning house each week gets a party, an incentive party, and house meetings occur two times per month to build camaraderie and increase social emotional skills such as kindness, empathy, and manners. We've had teacher training, we've had excellent professional development after school this year, where we focused on science standards, English language arts and math strategies, team rubric, classroom management behavior, and restorative practices. We're also very focused on reading. We're working diligently and intentionally to increase reading scores. In addition to our teacher professional development, we are partnering with experts from the micro teams, and those experts are coming to our school, and they're doing walkthroughs. They are modeling for our teachers, and they are co-teaching with our teachers, and they are also helping to lead on some of our PLCs. We are also using Title I resources to fund programs such as accelerated reader and eye-ready diagnostics and instruction pieces. We're working on teacher leadership and collective efficacy. We've created action teams, which have increased teacher leadership roles in the school. We've, we're building collective efficacy through teacher collaboration and building a stronger culture. We also have a new neighbor across the street from us, and that's SH Data Technologies. They're in the, what was the old Fort Hill building. They actually visited us on November 15th, and they're very interested in how they can partner with us, or how they could work with us and help support Green Magnet. We also have a new partnership with Johnson Architecture. Johnson Architecture won the contract for the KCDC Austin Homes Master Plan, and that's really important to our school, because many of our students will be affected by that. And what's really great is they're going to do a STEAM study with our students about the Austin Homes, so our kids can actually participate in that process, learn about that architectural process, and actually have some feeling of empowerment that they are helping make decisions about where they live, or where students that go to our school live. We're also excited to say that we have Comcast Cares has selected us this year. So on May 4th, they're going to come to Green Magnet and do all kinds of great things for us, and we're very excited and looking forward to that. Tomorrow night is our STEAM fling, and that is what used to be called our expo night, and that's when our students can showcase all the work they've done, or certain projects they've done this semester. That's from 4:30 to 6:30. I know it's short notice, but if any of y'all could come, we'd love to see you all there, and you could check out what our students are doing, and talk to our staff, and our principals, and parents, and whoever, and just see how things are going with us at Green Magnet. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your report. Thanks very much. And Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
Thank you. Board forum? Ms. Satterfield?
Yes, I just want to share that last week, Board Member Bab and myself, we had the opportunity to go to new school board member orientation in Nashville. And so we learned a lot of information, but more importantly, I want to share that it made me really proud to serve for Knox County and Knox County Schools. We're a good system, and we have a level of professionalism that I really appreciate, and so I hope that we can continue to serve with excellence. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to congratulate the Central Bobcats on winning the state football championship. They have worked, thank you. They've worked very hard, and we are really proud of their accomplishments. Would also like to thank our county commission for the discussion that they had during Monday's work session, if you missed that. What I appreciate most is their interest in supporting us as a board and our priorities, our legislative priorities, especially regarding both protecting and increasing funding. So I just want to let our commissioners know how much we, well, that we noticed, and that we appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Norman?
Thank you.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I, I'm always hesitant to call out wonderful things that students are doing in my schools, because there are so many students doing wonderful things in all of the schools. So I just want to give a shout out to our teachers and our students who are just doing amazing things, and they're, I'm constantly hearing about awards they're winning and accolades, and it's just, it really is nice to hear those things, and, and I'm always so proud of them, but, but I am always afraid I'm going to miss something big. So anyway, just know that, that we are cheering you on every step of the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bab?
I am actually going to brag on a student at West High School, because I think it is so extraordinary what she's doing. There's a student at West High School, Sophia Hamby, is a senior, who was selected to go on a expedition to Antarctica, and she is in Antarctica for two weeks right now. She's one of four American students and four South American students that are on this, and I just think it's amazing. And I mean, I just think it shows what our kids can do. I mean, our kids are doing amazing things all over the county. So can't wait to hear more about her trip when she gets back. I saw her mother the other day, and she's getting very little info, which makes her nervous, but I, I just think what an amazing opportunity for this student.
Thank you. Ms. Bounds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to wish congratulations to our former board colleague, Amber Roundtree, who had her third son yesterday and named him Miles Gray. So both mom and baby are doing well.
Christie? Ms. S?
I would like to thank the board for, on every decision, just being very vigilant about what the students and the parents are feeling, and just know that we are watching, and we notice, and we appreciate your dedication to us.
Thank you. I'd like to take a point of privilege before we adjourn, please, and recognize a colleague that this will be her last board meeting with us, and that's Dr. Kelly Drummond. You may or may not know, Kelly will be leaving Knox County Schools the end of the school year and returning to her home, which was the Boys and Girls Club. So I'm very grateful that we were able to, to steal her for a short time, but she's, she's going back to what I do believe is probably her first love. So you, it's been wonderful having you here, and you will be missed. So thank you for your service, Mr. Drummond. Do I hear motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Merry Christmas.